If we could ride and say the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Fantastic. Rob, are we live? Rob? Good. You ask me to say it every time, so I'm gonna continue to say it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Happy Monday, everybody. Hopefully it was a good one, and if not, well, you've got tomorrow. So, we have a couple presentations tonight. Our first one is gonna be our guys from SCI and DGA. Gentlemen? All right.
How is everybody good?
I'm very disoriented here. We kept the board on the other side.
I'm over here, it's over there. So don't look at me, look over there.
I'll try not to.
Rob has some new equipment I think he's testing out, so have the Viewsonic closer to him.
So I'd just like to give you a quick little update about the Capitol project and the items that have been going on last month for the project. So, again, this is your typical slide with our budget on here. Nothing really new here. But there, you can see a picture to the right. We did start the steel erection out in the front main entrance, so that's, we started last week. I will disclose, we've had some COVID-related labor issues with that crew, but they are returning this week to continue that work. So just to go through safety, quality, and all that, you know, again, we've had no safety incidents on this project to date. And on quality, there's been no issues throughout the entirety of this project. As far as cost goes, you can see as of the end of April, that is where we're at, we're about seventy-nine percent filled. You know, it doesn't really seem like it, but we're really that close to getting this project. About three months left, so we're getting down to the wire. You see our total contract value of just under thirteen million with some of the changes that we've thrown in to the project. And then unfortunately, the change order section at the bottom, and it hasn't changed since the last project. Before the last project, or last meeting, we wrote some big change orders for that alternate ten, for the roomwork, which I snuck in there before our last meeting. And over the last month, there haven't been any new ones put in to the contractors. So, every law's number at the bottom should hold from last month, as of right now. Or as of, I'm sorry, the day of April thirtieth. To the right, this is another picture of that main office area. Paint on the walls, painted frames. There is a ceiling in that hallway now, that picture was taken last week, but there's ceiling installation starting in there. Just to give an update on the project itself. Like last month, there's a few remaining items over at the other school that we're planning on tackling over the summertime. That includes a new window on the nurses, the tarozzo base, infills in the building, and then all of the exterior entrance work at the main entrance and the bus. So that's all still holding until the summertime, which we'll take care of that when that comes around. For the middle school, high school, just an area B. You know, like the last board meeting, I mentioned in the now guided suite, any remaining mechanical work is actually mechanical contracts, you're going in there in the morning, doing a little bit of work, and then the remaining of that work will finish shovel up this summer. The main office, as much as four ceiling installations started. The duct work is near completion, that's why we can't quite finish the ceiling yet. And then millwork installation is to start this week. All that cabinetry in there, kitchenette, et cetera, conference room. And then just a quick update, alternate ten, you know, again, with this alternate ten, we can't get into too deep into it right now, because we're keeping those toilet rooms for the students, but we're doing all the rough piping, and that's done, so that's getting insulated as we speak. And we're just kinda getting in there, getting as much done as we can until the school year ends, and we can really start demoing out the existing toilet rooms and get that one going really quickly. Area C, the main thing is that main entrance. I think the last meeting, we talked about the trenching that was being done, all the concrete footers and piers that were being poured. And now all that has been backfilled, and the steel installation, as I mentioned, has been started in that main entrance. And then going on to the windows. Window installation is continuing, as we started before. We're very close to being done with the whole main part of this front of this building. And we've snuck around to the back of the building, where we've completed the technology room back there and two of the music rooms. With the windows right now, we plan to be attacking a lot of the spaces that don't have asbestos-containing windows, and that's gonna keep going until the kids are out of school. And then that's, after that, is when we'll tackle the asbestos-containing windows. We've got the admin guys in here, we'll take care of those. Just a couple quick more pictures. We have a picture of that main entrance secretary area, the windows in the back, some exits and some duct work in the ceiling. Next picture, we have that steel work that did start last week at that main entrance. And then to the right of that is that toilet room in there that is completely tiled now, and the ceiling is actually installed in that room. And then if anyone has any questions, I can answer those. And then just, I just had another picture of across the front of the building there where we installed those toilets.
The top part of the windows, maybe you said it and I missed it, but to finish that off, what is that, what do we need to do there?
So those are some panels that we just were going back and forth on for some changes. So those are coming in, they just, we were under some changes, some lead time issues, so we changed up the product a little bit, but it's all good and sorrow coming in now. It's a conversation we had back and forth about changing it and proving how it is.
Will it match the frames? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the colors, the color of the, yeah.
Yes, it's all gonna remain the same as it was before this, yeah. Or originally planned for, I'm sorry.
Any other materials that you're waiting on and are not coming in?
Not at the moment. That, it, that's the last thing we had a conversation about, and we were able to kind of call an audible on that, and we got that coming in, nothing else, so.
Oh, that terrazzo flooring for elementary school is already here?
It's not here, but it is, we have heard that it is here. And we are asking, oh, I'm sorry. We're asking every day for a date of when that's gonna be here. Just pumping them every day, just to make sure that it's here on time.
Here in this location?
This location.
Is it in this country?
I can check for you. I don't know.
So, Ted, so I've never gone through a Capitol project before, but when we're, you say it sounds like we're nearing completion, we're getting closer to that end. I don't know how it works, but I always wish it worked this way in the district, the district that I've worked in. When we get nearer to the end of the Capitol project, it would be nice just to have some quick feedback about, you know, is there something missing or something not functioning correctly? For instance, our counselor, we got all new windows, right? The whole building got new windows, but we forgot, they forgot hers. And it came and gone and left, and there's still not new windows there. And so what I'm getting at is, is that there's, there's eyes in our buildings that are seeing it every day. And how do we wrap that up in a way where we know we're not missing anything? So like maybe, maybe there's a leaking in the front entrance of the elementary building perhaps. How would we be able to identify that's there and then it's rectified before we move on to something different?
Yeah, I think there's a number of different levels there. The first level is obviously DG is out here every day, and they're gonna be starting lists. So as we get to the end, there's gonna be multiple lists that we're gonna consolidate into one master punch list. And so they're gonna be looking for stuff, they're gonna start a list. The contractors may be aware of stuff, oh, I gotta fix this, I gotta fix that. Then we're gonna come through and do a sweep of the building, as well as our engineers. And then usually the way I've seen it happen is that the district will channel some, you know, because you have people in every room. District will channel comments through, for instance, Jordan, potentially. Then he can bring to us, and we can wrap all that stuff up into one thing. But we wanna know about everything, because, you know, we can't see everything you guys are gonna see. So if you see little things that we might have missed, we wanna know about it and get them on there.
So at this time, so if people are noticing things, how do they, how do they document that in a way so it's easier for you moving forward? Because inaptly out and about, I do hear that there's some things being missed here and there, aren't functioning perfectly. And I'm not throwing you guys under the bus, however, if you were to bet my board and chip over at my house, there are probably some things that aren't perfect there. But how could we start to, like, formulate a list? Or would we talk to Lynn, would it go to Jordan? I just wanna make sure that we don't get to the end of this, and then it's like, oh boy, you know, I said that that wasn't working and never was addressed.
Well, if there's, usually if there's a ticket for, if there's an issue in the building, they put in tickets.
Who sees those tickets?
Usually it's the custodial health ticket. So I would say though, with the Capitol project issues, I would say let your building principals know, so it's funneled up through, so then they can bring it to the admin meeting, and we can get it to Jordan and consolidate the list at that point in time. And then John and I would bring it to the OACM meetings and get it to the contractors, between John and Jordan and I.
Because we're getting to the end of the year, and, you know, people aren't always focused on the environment around them, they're focused on light the end. And I just don't wanna miss any of these opportunities that we have.
I know AJ and I have talked, and when Mike was here, we've got some running lists of some different areas that we already know we want to address. So I have great chair in May and June, so I can collect some information and really make sure that my building is covered before these guys sneak out.
Good.
Yeah, the sooner we know, the better. Because there could be a subcontractor that's still around that won't be here in July, let's say. And if we know about it now, we can easily get it rectified.
I think, like Christine said, I think the best way is to let the school principals know for sure. Let Jordan know, let, you know, all them know. And then that'll can come to me, and then I, I'll start making that run. I have started making that running list, but I can keep tallies of all these things. And then if I miss something, boom, it's on the list, and then that'll come in, he'll do his look, and then he'll put it on the list. We have so many layers of teams that come in afterwards, that, you know, then once they all get fixed, all these things, and we all look through it again to make sure they're all done, so.
Perfect. Anything else?
I mean, the other thing is that we do, we will hold payment for probably a significant, I would say factor of what's left. So let's say there's, you know, ten thousand dollars left to do. We're probably gonna hold more, much more than that as an incentive to come back and fix those items, so that there's no final payment until that list that these guys end up having is checked off. You know, we obviously want Jordan to sign off on that, Johns and Christine's and everybody to be, okay, the list is done. We can do final payment to whatever prime contractor.
Gentlemen, thank you again.
No problem.
The pleasure as always. That we're good?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony, thanks, as you're getting it.
All good night.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks.
All right. Next presentation is Officer Alejandro. A little bit about what's going on here at Old Ford.
Thank you all for having me. Word of the power of my presentations at Wilder.
That pretty good for a night?
I'm gonna try that a little more. All right, so, being that it's May, I've been here now almost the entire school year, so just kind of wanted to talk and give a recap of what I have done so far this year, what I am doing currently, and then some of the trainings I was able to attend because of being at the school and the opportunities that it's afforded me. If you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. So every day I have a certain allotment of tasks that I do, that I've kind of programmed into my daily routine. I don't necessarily wanna do death by powerpoint, walk through each one, but pretty much every day, I start off by checking the day before's previous calls. So it's not necessarily in that order, but I like to check the area to see if any of our families are impacted. If our students or teachers maybe had law enforcement interaction throughout the day. I do that normally on my way in, because I have a computer in my car, so when I first sign in at my house, I check, you know, so I know what I'm coming into. When I get here, I try to make sure I'm walking the campuses, the hallways, making sure I notice anything out of the ordinary. If there's a car parked overnight that's not typically here, some teachers get here earlier than others, you start to know what vehicles are here, what's suspicious, what's not suspicious, and kind of build on that. One of the things I try not to do, although I have a routine, is I try not to build habits, because unfortunately, people pay attention to those habits. So I do pretty much the same thing each day, but I don't necessarily do it in the same order or the same path. They say routine is bad for police officers, and unfortunately, that is the case. So one of the most important tasks I think I do each day is, I call it like a visual inspection of the faculty, the kids coming in. I try to see if I can see any abnormalities on their facial features. Are they coming in, are they not only happy and laughing with their friends? Or today are they kind of sullen, are they, their heads down? You know, does it look like they've worn the same outfit from yesterday to today? Am I picking up on those little things that could lead me to believe that maybe they're a student in crisis? Maybe something happened that we didn't involve law enforcement, and I'm unaware of. So those are little things I'm trying to see as kids are walking in each day. So I might be at the back bus loop, you know, trying to see the kids coming in through there. I might be standing out front, trying to see, I have, there's only one of me, and there's a few different doors, but I try to get around to see what's going on with our students. So after I perform that visual check, I normally will do a physical inspection. So the door's locked, they say the pledge. At that point, I know that all the exterior doors should be locked to the outside, so I'll do like a perimeter walk to the building, make sure all the doors properly latched, everything that should be locked, locker rooms for morning practices, and those things are secured. That's, and open door is probably the worst thing a school could possibly have, whether you guys are aware or not. In almost all instances of bad events happening at a school, it starts off with the door being unlocked or unsecured. There's very few instances where someone physically breaks into a building. So I'll assist with the parent drop-off at the elementary school. Some of you have seen me out there, whether that be opening doors, helping get kids out of the building, helping the elementary school get in. So typically, high school, then, as we're settled in, everything seems secure, I'll touch base with the counselors, the principals, and then I work my way over to the elementary school, and I kind of restart that process. Throughout the course of the day, besides visual and physical inspections throughout the school, I try to attend study halls, lunches, interact with kids in the hall. I try not to be in my office, like segregated to myself. I try to mix in and have those one-on-one conversations while you're walking the hall. If a kid's out going to the bathroom, you know, something like that. Just those little interactions where you say a joke or ask how the game is, I think, make a huge impact. I review the security camera footage if there's anything that happens. I also check to make sure that they're actively functioning, that there's no issues with them. Myself and a few others are able to do that. Make sure that Rich and who needs to know can get those functioning if they're not. And then help plan or prepare for safety drills, if we have upcoming fire drills or lockdown drills, and go through there. So just some additional roles and responsibilities that aren't necessarily typical roles and responsibilities for a deputy or a police officer, but as an SRO, I feel like they're important, and I feel like these are almost just as important and if more important than the physical security of the building. Because as long as your mechanical systems are in place, those should all take care of themselves, and I'm just providing that reassurance. But providing counseling and support to the students in crisis. A lot of times, I find myself sitting with the counselor or Mr. Montreux or Mr. Peterson, having conversations with students who are just having a bad day. Whether that be unfortunate thoughts of self-harm or issues with other students, trying to help them work themselves through those issues and provide a different perspective, not necessarily always law enforcement. Sometimes it's just because I'm a human being who went through life, or because I have three daughters myself. I try to provide that perspective to the best of my ability. Perform threat assessments and mental health assessments. We haven't had to do a ton of mental health assessments. There has been a couple of cases this year in which a student was in crisis, and I had to perform an assessment and determine whether or not remaining in school, going home, or going to a hospital was the best course of action. With me being a police officer, I'm the only person in the building who's certified to mandate someone to a hospital if they're in a mental health crisis. So sometimes I have to do that. Provide legal guidance to students and faculty. Whether it's, I got pulled over and I got a ticket, what should I do? Or, hey, this person's doing this to me at my house, and I don't like it. I'm not necessarily a lawyer, and I can't provide that type of legal advice, but I can let them know if something's criminal, or if they have a question, or, you know, a student's having an issue at home, and I feel like it needs to be elevated to CPS or something along those lines. Assist school admin with parent meetings and phone calls. I've sat with Matt, Lynn, JC, just speaking to parents about an issue or a situation, providing some additional guidance. Sometimes it might not reach a level of a criminal offense, or, and a lot of times it doesn't when it's in a school, but that doesn't mean I can't provide a different perspective on, you know, in the real world, if something like this, for instance, bullying. It's not bullying in the real world, it's harassment. I can kind of word that and make sure the kids understand that outside of school, there's repercussions for their actions, and, you know, how we can avoid those things. I can help with the disciplinary process. If necessary, it's not like I'm assigning detentions or anything like that, but maybe if there's an issue, they can review it off of me and see what, where I gauge the severity of the situation. I performed a number of home visits, whether that be because a student's not reporting to school or because a parent's reporting that they can't get their student to school. And then I'll go out with an administrator or a counselor, or a social worker, and see if I can convince that child to school. And we've been fairly successful with that. Of just having a conversation and then providing them a little bit of additional assistance, that parent that maybe can't get the kid out of bed, or just gets really not listening. And it's not an intimidation factor if anyone knows me or works with me. I'm not a yeller, I'm not like a screamer, I'm not really that type of person. I'm more of a conversational person. I'd rather get you laughing and kind of get on my side and get you moving on than I would screaming and yelling. And I think that's kind of let, let me build better relationships with the kids. I'm not trying to scream at them or support you about something that's wrong. I can kind of joke with them and let them know where they need to stop and where that line is. Again, assisting the students, support team members, whether it be the social workers, the counselors, or administrators. And then provide after-hours assistance if needed. There are often times, and I've kind of instructed the other road deputies, if there's an issue involving a student or parent from the school, to let me know. Doesn't matter what time it is, they'll text me, they'll call me. I worked nights for the last three years before this, so they'll call me at three in the morning, it doesn't really matter, just so I can get a gauge. They might have some, maybe some questions, or maybe it's a student who doesn't like to be called a certain name. And I know the different names they like to be called, and it's helping facilitate that. And I also listen to my radio unfortunately when I'm not working, which is not the greatest thing ever, but I can kind of text that officer that I hear getting, hey, when you go here, this is what's going on. And then just be a positive presence and a role model for students. I feel like law enforcement in this country right now is a tough gig a lot of times, but we live in a very good community. And if I can encourage some of these kids to pursue that field, or maybe to view them in a different light and build those relationships young, I've got sixteen years left working in this county, and I'd rather have a positive relationship that starts now and goes all the way through adulthood, when they have kids and everything like that, than the first time they see me is because they're in trouble. So some of the trains that I provided to the students, this year being my first year, most of them were developed this year, and I'd like to develop more for next year and expand upon them. Traffic safety and what to expect on traffic stops, that's something I did for my split in this class. She had asked me if I could come in and talk, and there was really no subject. It was what I wanted to talk about. Given the age group of the kids, which was mostly juniors and teacher, starting getting their license, I chose traffic safety, and by that I mean like good driving habits, things to avoid. And then what to expect on a traffic stop. Sounds kind of weird, I hope none of them get stopped, but it's what I as an officer would want someone to do. Whether that be, hey, if you don't know where your documents are, and you know you're gonna fumble through it, maybe wait till I'm at your window to start reaching for everything and grabbing everything. Give them a perspective of what it feels like to be a police officer. On the other end, when you're pulling up behind someone, and they start reaching for all their documents and papers, and you don't know what's going on. Things that they can and cannot do within search and seizure laws. You know, a lot of people don't realize that a police officer can ask you to step onto your car without you being in any trouble, just because you're at a traffic stop, and they prefer to talk on the side of the road versus in your car. And although it's not super common, there are some police officers who prefer that. They prefer to get away from the vehicle and have a neutral territory behind it. But just letting kids know that that's not weird. Or young females or young kids in general, if you get pulled over at three o'clock in the morning and you're not comfortable, what are some things that you can do to try to make that stop better for you? You can dial nine-one-one, you can ask to speak with the dispatcher and say, is there a police officer in this area? You know, I don't wanna stop unless I confirm that I'm actually behind a police officer or in front of a police officer. Just things of that nature. Identifying and providing bullying and hazing, I did that with Courtney Kelly's class. Just kind of explains to them that bullying and hazing in school equals this, which when you get out of here, these are the criminal procedural laws that you could be violating, but also, you know, the repercussions of the actions that you're following, and how to try to prevent getting in those traps. The bathroom etiquette and respecting property, that was kind of talking to the elementary kids, because there were some issues with the new bathrooms, kind of being destroyed, and some issues happening within there. So I sat in a, we went into a lunchroom one day and just kind of had a group conversation, myself, Lynn, and Joe, and kind of explained to the kids that they need to respect property, and that there's repercussions for their actions outside of school if it gets damaged or within school. Identifying and preventing domestic violence. At some point, everyone has experienced some form of domestic violence, whether through friends or anything, just understanding ways of picking up on it, things you can do to help. Vaping and E six presentations, I provided those with the Jacasa representative, just talking to kids on what to avoid, what is vaping and E six, and what kind of legal repercussions there are for doing those things. Aerosol presentations, we've been doing them in the elementary school, and I'm gonna be doing that with the high school counselors coming up soon. That's just explaining, you know, safe touch and those type of behaviors. DWI presentation, I also did that in the health class, where it was, we did a mock DWI simulation where they used the drug goggles, I think they're called, and kind of ran them through field tests, and also explained the repercussions for driving under the influence and just some things that I've seen. A lot of times, the kids have questions about events that I've seen, and although sometimes the stories can be entertaining, I try to tie them into a lesson so that it's not just me talking. For Ms. Lucas's class, I did a presentation on becoming a law enforcement officer, which included the requirements for PT tests, the education requirements, and then how they can segue what they wanna do as a career to a career in law enforcement, or vice versa. You know, whether it be photography, and that they can do that through privacy photography, or, you know, artist renderings, those kind of things, that there's probably a spot in some form of law enforcement for that. And then I performed this last one at GCC for the Youth Summit Conference, the advanced internet and social media safety, and I hope to be performing it for the middle school career day. And that, I feel, is extremely important, and that focuses on how to avoid those traps. A lot of people don't realize that coercion is up eighty percent from 2020. So that's people trying to actively pursue young people online, whether that be soliciting photographs or them to meet with COVID, and everyone being on Chromebooks and phones more frequently, that skyrocketed. It's affected people in our community and Genesee County. So if I can talk to anybody and stop them from doing that, I think that's extremely important. And this is very small. But this is just some things that I've done over time. Throughout the course of the year, I think day one, I helped grill food for the Lake freshman orientation, so just trying to mingle in with the kids. And, you know, I participated in the ritual challenge, which was great. It was able to be vulnerable on myself, but also be around kids who were vulnerable at that time, and kind of really form a relationship. Hopefully they could see me as more than just a police officer at that time. Provide traffic control for the walk to school days. I was able to get K nine Frankie in for the fire safety drills, I think I'm having him come back, as well as K nine Razor. Traffic control for pumpkin crossing, I think it's Matt, I saw you there. Just different parents who were, my ribbon week videos, following the bus on their bus routes. There was a bus driver who had spoke about people passing their buses while she was stopping. So for a few days that week, I followed a different bus each day, and just let people know, typically during that time, it's commuter traffic, and the same people take the same road each day. You might not catch that one person who's coming to the rez for the first time, it's gonna blow past the sign, but the person who now has to think twice about blowing past the bus on their way to work, hopefully that, that provided some assistance. Participate in classroom activities, whether it be writing projects, animal writing projects. I did slime making the other day, and my slime was not successful. I think I got bad glue. Whether it be cafeteria support, if they're down a person, you know, helping clean the tables, helping sit around and grab straws, open milk, I'm becoming a pro at that, if anyone can tell. The CPR demonstrations, physical education, I worked with the high school physical education teachers and sat through every class with them, and kind of gave it kids, or gave the kids perspective on what it's like to do CPR in real life, and why it's important to know that skill and how it can translate, and how you never know what's gonna happen, both from my personal life and through the sheriff's office. I love to read the elementary school classes. If anybody ever asks, I'll be more than willing to do that, it's one of my favorite things to do. I kind of miss that with my own kids now, reading them books, so it's a perfect opportunity to do that. So I'm more than willing to do that. My favorite job so far this year was burger judge for Houghines class, where I got to sample all the different burgers, just again, let the kids see me in a different light. I participated in the Labor Day's parade, as well as the Christmas parade and the tree lighting. Recommended students for Shop with the Cop, and then participate with Shop with the Cop. I was able to secure some additional donations to our union for a family that was in need for an Oldfield resident, and it was, to my knowledge, the only school that was able to kind of receive that donation from the sheriff's union. I helped with lunch attentions if they need someone, or maybe just a different person to talk to if a kid's struggling. Traffic control for White to School Day this coming week. Traffic control for White to School Day this coming week. I'll be participating and an instructor at the Teen Academy this year, so hopefully we're going to have a good turnout with that. That'll be at GCC, it gives the kids an opportunity to go through an abridged Police Academy, which includes a police car, a shooting simulator, all that stuff. So it should be great. Hopefully, we get a bunch of participants there. And then also was able to recommend some students for the Sheriff's Association Summer Camp, which takes four underprivileged kids who wouldn't be able to go to a camp. It's not police-related, it's just a summer camp, where they still fish, they ride, you know, kayaks, and do all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, the kids that we recommended will be able to attend that as well. And then just quickly, some trainings that I've been able to complete this year because of this position. The New York State Red Flag Conference, which talked about the red flag laws and what that is, and how that can help if you're unaware. Essentially, if you feel like someone's a threat to themselves or the community, but necessarily hasn't committed a crime, you can recommend them to be reviewed for New York State Red Flag, which could prevent them from purchasing further firearms or temporarily remove the ones they have. And that sounds, you know, like for pro-second amendment, that could be an issue, but it's not, it's not we're taking people's guns. It's people who are threats to themselves. Their family is noticing that they're making suicidal ideations, and they haven't done something enough to warrant, like I said, committing a crime, but maybe they just need a few months to seek mental health. They get their firearms back, but in the meantime, let's get them into treatment, and let's give them a safer space to be. CAF School's Social Media Presentation, that was put on by the Secret Service. It was an online seminar, I was able to attend that. That's where I learned about the coercion stuff and the different online processes that are going on right now. School Safety and Security Personnel, that was a great conference. It was in-person at the Kodak Center, and we were able to speak with David Buds, who is now retired, FBI Director, who was in charge of the Parkland school shooting debriefing. I learned a ton of information on there that I was able to bring back. I would highly recommend anyone seeing him speak, he's now working independently. I was able to attend the first annual CPAS conference, and that's all the SROs from New York State are able to gather together, they brought in speakers. There was a couple of first-time events that happened there. One in particular was, for the very first time ever, a former active school shooter, who was recently released from police custody in jail, presented and allowed a group of police officers to ask him questions about the reverse experience. So not the victim's side, which is almost all conferences you'll attend and meetings, but what his mindset was going into it. And so it was extremely eye-opening. There was also the SRO who was at the Santa Fe School Shooting that happened in 2018, which they call the School Shooting That Was Forgotten. He's never spoken anywhere, he just so happened to be a former Saratoga Springs police officer and agreed to attend that conference. So those were both first-time speakers and first-time events that I was able to attend because of that conference. The UBC School Seminar was more targeted towards threat assessment management and creating those type of teams and social organizations within your school. Assess and Progress is a threat assessment program where it gives you kind of training and experience so you can determine whether or not quickly someone could be a threat or not. Trauma, Illness, and Grief is TIC training, and that's also, I took that at Lyra Bosse's. Allows you to show better empathy, just kind of works you through scenarios. In the case of a tragedy, now, because of that, if another school, heaven forbid, has a tragedy in this area, and they reach out to TIC, I could provide assistance to them through that. And then that crisis group management is with TIC, and it allows you to help organize, maybe a debrief after an incident and those kind of things. And that's just a collage of some of the photos, some of my favorite photos from this year. Whether it be that I had to ask for permission to wear that wine shirt, but it was well worth it. Whether it just be like reading in classrooms or trying to be as personal as I possibly can. I try to be the same person at home that I am at school, and I hope it comes across to the kids that I'm not just a police officer and those kind of things. If anyone has any questions, that's all I have.
Really well presented. I do have just a quick question. So you talked about crisis and threat assessment there, that you received some training there, and how maybe to possibly establish teams or work within teams.
Yep.
Can you talk a little bit about, and I'm not referring necessarily to a singular student that's in crisis, or I'm talking about maybe possibly an outside impact, like a threat assessment team that would be...
Yeah, so actually, that's something I'm extremely passionate about. If you guys don't know, my older sister is a captain for the Buffalo Police Department, and she's in charge of their behavioral health team. She created their Officer Mental Health Partnership, where they go out and handle mental health. She also created their Erie County Threat Assessment Team. So I have already submitted all the documentation over to our sheriff to try to create a Genesee County Threat Assessment Team, which we would be the first school if it gets approved, and then you would work with DSS. You would work with Genesee County Justice, probation. And it wouldn't just be for the school, it'd be for outside agencies too, to say, you know, you'd get someone from Walmart, perhaps Tops, large employers, to give perspective, provide a different avenue for treatment or help. Maybe they just need a job. Hey, Walmart's offering this as an example, and you could present a case. And they don't need any information, the way these teams work is give me first and last name, or just age and sex, and what your concerns are, and we can collectively form a group to say, this is what we want to do. That's something I'm like extremely passionate about. So hopefully, I've submitted, like I said, to the Sheriff's Department for review, and then if they approve it, if that happens, and we have outside agencies, it's a structured training and a risk any, you go for a week. The key is, I have my own personal biases, you all have your own personal biases. You go through a unique training so that you're all on the same page. And you all have individual opportunities that you can offer to somebody, but you're all viewing it through the same lines, and you kind of get rid of that bias. So I hope that helps.
No, it's perfect. I think a threat assessment team, a mental health team in place, maybe within our school district, would be a really wonderful thing where, you know, it could be at the building level, and then we meet as a district and go over scenarios that could possibly happen, and how we would solve them would be something that would be really what I think your position could help.
I would love it, and I hope we can not only do something as a school, which we have, you know, a threat assessment team as a school with counselors and social workers and admin and myself, but to take it to that next level and involve community members who can then, yeah, who can provide that unique perspective. Maybe, like I said, it's just someone who's down on their luck and they've had trouble with employment. If we can get that portion underway, it might help with some other aspects of their mental health. So then we pair with Genesee County Mental Health to get up those services, the employment services, and now we're creating a productive member of society and kind of stopping them from going down that path.
That's very exciting, that's really cool. I just, I think you're non-teens, but you're odd, you know, the way you go through the day, the trainings that you've given, you've taken, and then how you participate with our district is really what we've been looking for, I think, and really do appreciate what you've done up to this point.
With the position, I do have a question. So with any position, whether it's admin or law enforcement, they say the first year is really just getting the lay of the land, right? You're getting to know all the nooks and crannies, you're getting to know the faculty and build the rapport, and then the second year is really when you start to hit the ground running with all of that information.
Yep.
Do you see that? The second year going into it, do you see what that next level, kind of what you just touched on, for our district?
Yeah, so I feel like this year, again, it was learning how to become an SRO. And with anything that I've tried to do in my life, it's like I can't settle for mediocrity. I want to try to keep going and build on it. So with those classes or lessons that I've tried to do this year, I'd like to double that for next year. And it's ultimately a matter of how much time teachers are able to provide within their classes. But I have, I'm not short on words. I have tons of things I could possibly teach, possibly say, and I would love to be even more involved. You know, I've talked to the people with the musicals and those kind of things. Like, I love that stuff. I would love to try to see how I can get involved in those kind of things. So I'm kind of, I'm all in on Oldfield, Alabama, and this is what I'm trying to kind of encompass my career in for the foreseeable future.
Nice work. I love the interaction with the classes and the kids, and then you're right, and we'll go a long way down the road with the relationship.
I think so, thank you.
Yeah, great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like we should applaud.
And we don't usually. Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan.
Okay, Christine, you're up next, and I think you're going to go over our three-part budget here.
Yes. Okay, this is our final budget presentation before the vote next week. So our 2223 disposable budget, that the appropriations were approved and the property tax card were approved at the last board meeting. Our $23,589,606 budget that we're putting forth to the voters is supported by revenues coming 67% from state aid, property taxes supported by 23%, and other revenues make up the rest, and utilizing some fund balance and reserves. As you can see from this slide, our state aid represents about, which represents about 67% of our budget. It increased by 11.12% from prior year. And as you learned from last, previous meetings, the biggest portion of that is being increased via the billing aid for the capital project that is finishing up this next year, that will generate aid. And also our foundation aid, that only went up 3%, that's the biggest portion of that. And our expense driven aid also went up about $393,000, so. Also on here is the first year, you'll see of the pilot for Plug Power. That's coming on, that's the first year's $308,000. We are showing an increase in the use of our reserves. That is the debt service reserve that we're using to make an additional principal payment on the ban for the capital project that's turning into a bond this next year. So that's the, that and the tax, property tax cap. We went, our cap was 1.97, and we are going up with a 1.1%, which generates $59,000 increase in the tax levy. Here's our tax levy history, and I think we've seen this chart before. Our trend, our average over the year since 1213, since the implementation of the tax cap, is about 0.97, we're going up to 1.1. So we, the blue line on there is the tax cap that we could have gone up. The yellow line is what we did not go, what we did go to. The projected tax rates for the each town in the district. It's showing, I'll use Alabama as an estimate on a $100,000 house. The tax would go up $24 over the course of the year, to about $2 a month. The expenditure side of our budget, this is in a little different format than the presentations that I've done prior months. However, this is the legal format, that we have to do that, and you'll see that in the budget newsletter and budget booklet that went out. As you can see, we spent about 65% of our revenue on the program component, which is the largest component, which makes up, provides support for instruction and educational support, includes transportation, general and special education, and salaries and benefits. Capital component's the next largest component that provides, you know, maintaining the two buildings, including, you know, utilities, the debt service on the capital projects, and benefits for maintenance and custodial sedana. And then the administrative component is the smallest of the three components at 10.82% of our budget, and that is what provides overall general support and management activities for the district. A little, this is the breakdown you're probably used to seeing of our proposed expenditures. As you can see, you know, salaries and benefits make up the largest portion of our budget. The biggest increase you're going to see is in our debt service line. Again, we talked about this in prior meetings, first year of the capital project, first year of the debt service payment. Again, on the revenue side, you saw that that's offset a little with the increase in billing aid. The equipment line is another large increase proportionately. That's because we're getting back on our bus transportation vehicle replacement plan. This year, we're going to be behind two full-size buses. And I just want to make a little side note on this. Our transportation fleet, and we have one of the best looking fleets around. You know, people notice us, and it's because we take care of our buses. Josh brought up today that the, our annual bus inspection profile from New York State DMV, we scored 100%, meaning all of our buses pass their inspection the first time, with no red flags, nothing saying you need to go back and fix this or fix that. They pass them off. So kudos to our transportation department for that. But again, we have a seven-to-10-year replacement plan on the buses, depending upon mileage and usage. Last year, we just purchased two vans, which we're just getting our first van this week, or next week should be coming. Hopefully, we'll get the second one before the end of the school year. But next year, we're going back to those full-size buses, which are a lot more expensive. So that's why we increased in that line. Again, we also had that annual transfer to capital line. That is that 100K capital outlay project, that we try to do one of those every year. This year was the entryways in September over here at the high school, and next year's going to be the bleachers and the divider at the elementary school. We get 93% state aid on that, on those type of expenditures, so it's a good little investment, way to get the small projects done. Some budget highlights for this year, again, the capital outlay project. We're continuing on with those, they're a $100,000 project. We get 93% aid, so we can get $100,000 with the work done for about $7,000. We're getting two full-size 65-passenger buses at about $290,000. And again, we get transportation aid for those over the next five years amortized, and our transportation ratio is 90%, so that's good. Special education, one special education teacher at the elementary school. It includes a shared guidance secretary at the middle high school. We, it adds one maintenance mechanic, which we were very fortunate to get generated, some good candidates from an interview process we had for the grounds position. We found a good candidate for the maintenance position already, so hopefully we can get that department to strength some extra support that it needs. Next year, we're continuing on with some other projects. Our outdoor PA speaker strobe notification system. Again, that's a $41,000 approximately project purchased through Bosse's aid, so we get Bosse's aid on that, and that's at approximately 83% aid. And those come in future years, so we expend it now, we get the aid the next year. Professional development for staff that we have not been doing since COVID. We started some of that this year, we're going to be continuing on with that. And also just supporting the social emotional learning of our students through our partnership with Genesee County Mental Health, Rachel's Challenge, Jacasa, and our onsite social worker. An overview of our district reserves since 2017 through 202021. That was the end of last fiscal year. You know, we did reduce our capital reserve by the 1.6 million, but then we were able to, at the end of last year, add into it 870 with our unique surplus situation last year. So that's going to help us get ready for our next capital project. Anybody who wants to, needs information on the budget, our website is up to date with that information. If you go to District, the District button there at the top, and you hit Budget, it'll take you right to this page. It has the dates, the times, and it also has a link to the budget newsletter and the budget booklet and all the required supplements and other information as you scroll down on who's qualified to vote and all of that. The budget vote is next week, Tuesday, May 17, from 11:00 to 8:00 here in the community room. the community room, you'll be voting on two propositions, one is for the school budget for next year, and number two is approving a student ex officio board member, and two open seats on the board that are open with Matt and Justin's positions, but they're both running again, it's incumbent. Anybody have any questions on budget? You're all budgeted out?
We haven't paid attention. Oh, thanks, thanks again, Christine.
You're very, you're very welcome.
Well done. Okay, on item three, our minutes, be resolved with the minutes of the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting be approved, can I get a motion? Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, any visitors requests tonight?
No.
Approval of warrants, be resolved that after an audit of the bill's payment of the April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two warrant, and internal claims I report to be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, John, what's the policies ahead there?
So for the board, there are three policies up for your first reading, due to the fact that you approved at the last meeting, the last policy, so policy seventy-five sixty is an update to our current policy, and if the board can see we included what our current policy is and then what the recommended policy is, seventy-five sixty is the notification of sex offenders. I found in review of this policy that there seemed to be a portion at the end of our current policy that seemed to be, and I don't know if it was purposefully omitted, or just overlooked, but the new policy from two thousand sixteen has the highlighted information for you on the special circumstances whereby sex offenders may enter upon school grounds, and I've highlighted that for you, which again is not in our current policy for whatever reason, so you can take a look at that. Policy eighty-one ten basically says that our curriculum and what we do here as far as resources and evaluation follow the New York State Education Department and all of the state learning standards, it does provide an update on definitions of what curriculum is, instruction is, and the state learning standards. Our policy is very old, it's from two thousand six, so education has changed in sixteen years, so we need to update this policy, and in conjunction with that, I also included policy eighty-three thirty. We're at that stage in our, in our environment where there possibly could be objections to any instructional materials or controversial issues that we may or may not instruct here within the district. This provides, again, some more strict definitions of what controversial issues, instructional materials, library materials, textbook materials are, obviously technology has changed, and then basically provides a more, more, more of a process of how district community members or parents or students or anybody could object to certain materials that we have here in school, it provides a timeline, it outlines that we would need to establish a committee, and basically go from there, so it's just an update to a very vague policy back in two thousand six, because at that time, you know, we're not facing what we are today, so now's the time to update at least those two policies. So these are your first readings.
So on that last policy, the review committee will submit a written report of the results of the review, the superintendent within sixty days will receive a formal written objection, so in this hypothetical example, when, when there's a family that's concerned about what a student is being taught, before that you read, it's very limited the circumstances of which the student could be reassigned, a new assignment, or be removed from the classroom due to the objections, sixty days seems like a really long time before this family, obviously the lesson will have come and passed.
Correct, so, so bottom line is, if, if a, if a parent or a family wants to object to something that is being taught in class, and I will say this, that, you know, we would, we would listen, we would understand, I don't think we're at, at a place where we would, we would force a kid to, to sit and listen, we, you know, every parent right now has, has the, you know, if there's good reason for it, has the right to opt their child out of, you know, set instruction. And the reason the sixty days is in there is that we don't automatically pull that, you know, we have the time and we're supposed to continue on with our instruction, and we do have the sixty days, by the time we form a committee, by the time someone reads it, I mean, it could, it could be a book, it could be a library book, it could be a novel, where you'd have to have a committee all read it, and then decide on it. But I, I will say, the policy is very lenient, I think we would do our due diligence to work with the family, you would be notified right away, I don't think it would take us sixty days, maybe in some larger, bigger districts it would, and, but I'm, I'm at that point where, you know, if there's a controversial issue or topic that's in our school system, in our buildings, I would hope, first of all, that we're very transparent, and we're communicating to the parents ahead of time, that this is what we're gonna be talking about, let's say it's a health class, or even, you know, a social studies class where, hey, we might be talking about, you know, this and this and that, I would hope that our teachers are transparent and, you know, parents are aware of that, and that's when you run into issues where kids come home and say, hey, you won't believe what I learned in class today, and then the parents have questions, and then you find yourself kind of, you know, backtracking. I know sometimes when we watch movies, or, you know, English teachers do have novels in the upper grades, hopefully there's the idea that the parents are aware of what we're reading or what we're watching ahead of time, it's where, you know, you may have, you know, guest speakers, or someone may be talking about critical race theory in, in class, which I don't think any of our teachers are experts on, you know, the, the topic may come up, but I don't expect our social studies teachers to spend three weeks on critical race theory, because it's, you know, it's a theory, it's not instruction, but, you know, and to this date, I haven't had any parents object to what we're doing here in school, and if we are gonna change our curriculum, that is per board approval, if there's something outside of the New York State learning standards, or let's say we're gonna overhaul a class, and now we're gonna completely use different textbooks with different learning standards, the board needs to be made to know of that, and that's kind of why when, you know, Matt comes to us and says, hey, we wanna offer up, you know, human anatomy and physiology, you need to approve that, because we are changing classes and we are changing our curriculum, but in the end, I think some of this is few and far between, I've had one, you know, objection to learning materials since I've been in education in twenty-five years, so while the policy seems to be very long, that you have sixty days, I don't think that that's gonna, in a small district like this, you know, we'd have that resolved, and we would be able to satisfy, you know, that family if there, if there's a legitimate issue of, you know, what they do or do not want their child to learn, you know, we, we would be able to accommodate that.
The review committee levels the, the decision, does it, may I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so you're supposed to have a review committee, this is not a, one person decides, this is not my decision, this isn't Matt or Lynn's decision, this isn't the, the board's decision per se, this is where you would have multiple people, if it happens to be a, a library book, we would have obviously the library do some research on the age appropriateness, you know, maybe the awards, what is the topic about, you'd probably have some English teachers be involved in, in reading it, and then deciphering what it is, so it really kind of depends on the materials, if you're talking something about social studies and history, you'd probably gather a few social studies teachers together to figure out, you know, what's appropriate, what's fact, what's opinion, what should we be teaching, what shouldn't we, so that's what that review committee is, is for.
Is this, this is, this is a state policy, so it's just, we're just adopting, adopting word for word, a recommendation from the state?
Correct. Now, we can make changes to it, some policies do have where you wanna make it, you know, you know, you can add wording in there to your district, but this is a pretty straightforward policy, on just that if somebody wanted to object to, you know, anything that we're teaching, they would obviously write that and, and submit it to me.
I, I just ask, because when I say the review committee will submit a written report of the results of their review, it's, it's a bit ambiguous to me if they're the ones that are actually leveling a decision and a verdict on this, and I guess that is the case, it's, it's not you, though you need to appeal to the superintendent.
It's ultimately us, though, right, so?
And, and, yes, and then if you read the second paragraph, it says the board will be informed of any objection the superintendent receives, so if someone wants to say, hey, you know, I don't want this novel, you know, I, I object to this novel in, you know, ninth grade for the kids to be reading, I would review the appeal, I would, you know, go down and, first of all, talk to the teacher, we would do our research of, you know, how long have you been teaching this, is this a new book, and then of course you put a review committee together of, again, maybe two or three English teachers, you'd get the librarian, people that would have background knowledge of, of what that is, and then, you know, they would, they would review it and come up with, you know, with a determination, and then they would give that to me, and I would let, you know, the board know of, of decisions. But in the end, the board has the right to, you know, hear an appeal if, if the parents aren't happy, because in the end, that was the policy beforehand, you are the ones that approve the curriculum of, of this district.
It's, it's interesting to me, it's your main, right, to the times, as we say, because if you watch the news, there, there are a lot of people that think things are being taught in the classrooms, that, I'm not sure it's being taught in these classrooms, but if you believe what you're hearing, they're being taught in our classrooms.
Correct.
I'm positive that the people of our district would call us very quickly if some of these things were being taught in these classrooms, that they tell us on the news.
Well, it's, it's an interesting point, right? It depends on what you watch, if you're watching Fox, you hear one thing, CNN, it's another, and the reality is, it's not correct in our classrooms.
Yeah, the two big things right now are the, the critical race theory and the, and the sex education.
Sure.
I will tell you in K through eight, as, as Deputy Alejandro said, we are teaching Aaron's Law, but you can go right to, you can go right to the website, you see the, the standards K through eight, the PowerPoints are available, you know, parents were, were told that, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're teaching, we are not, and right now, more people are worried about the sex education that could be taught in ninth through twelve, that has not been passed by, you know, the governor yet, if that comes down, I can't wait to see what the objectives and the learning standards are.
That's where all stems from, is that's what we're guided by, is our, the, the standards and objectives that are set by, you know, the state and the region, so it's not as if we're just closing our eyes and pulling out.
Right, and, and, and to that-
Our curriculum is supported by these standards, if it's not, we're in big trouble, right?
Right.
That's what we can lean on upon this, we're just not creating-
But to that end, in certain situations, you know, like the sex education, you're not gonna take a region's exam on it, so school districts have the flexibility, even with this diversity and inclusion and equity, you know, our BOCs is working on providing school district resources, how we teach that, which I don't necessarily think is, is a curriculum, but it's something that we model, it's something that we talk about, it's something that's just kind of embedded in, in conversations, you know, it's kind of like the CRT, not that I think that we should ignore it, but this isn't something that you ask the social studies teacher, here's, here's four weeks, go teach this, there's, there's no curriculum to it, there's an idea and a theory behind it, and should we talk about it? Absolutely, but this, again, is not something where, all right, kids, turn to chapter two, we're learning about critical race theory in here, that, that's just not happening, so, you know, with all that, like I said, comes, comes flexibility in, in how much and what do we wanna, you know, touch upon, so.
The very last paragraph, there's just a bit of a typo there to clean up before we get to the next reading, this starts with the, if the objections are related, it's missing the two there.
Where's that, Ben? The last paragraph? Oh, I see, okay, yep, I got you. Do you see that? I know, last paragraph.
Man, I'll get that correct.
Thank you. John, policy seventy-five sixty, though, the twenty sixteen, that wasn't approved by this board, right?
No, it was not. The policy services do a quarterly and a monthly update, this is the most recent update to it, yes.
So I'd like to do a second read with these, if that's okay, definitely, at least for the last policy that we're talking about, and just kind of push it down the road to next month, and maybe tackle it, and maybe make a couple of adjustments or suggestions throughout the course of this month.
Yeah, if you have any comments or whatever, certainly send me, send me the edits or send me questions, certainly.
Christine, are you, any reports for us tonight?
I'm business administrator reported out already.
I'm, 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 I don't wanna steal your stage here.
If there's anything, any, anyone has any questions or concerns on the budget, next month, I, I'd like to give you guys an update on our federal stimulus grants, and where we're at on those approvals, and updates, and how it's shaping out, you know, year over year, and how that spending is going, but otherwise, you know, wrapping up, wrapping up the school year, we are transitioning to new software for accounting September or July one, so we're gonna, we're in, knee deep in the middle of that transition, and getting the data converted, and we're gonna be doing some training for our faculty staff, some before the end of summer, and some over the summer, so. That's what's going on in the matter of fact.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
John?
Happy that we finally have some nice weather this week, all our spring teams, spring coaches are, are happy, all of our teams are very successful right now, all have, all have winning records, and everybody's doing well, so hopefully, you know, this week we can continue on with the games and get the ground to dry out, and, you know, it's, it's been great to go out there and, and watch and play, so looking forward to hopefully some sectionals and some championships here. Next Tuesday, for the community, is the district budget from eleven to eight in the middle, or in the community room here, the ES is putting on a parent picnic on that day with an art show, we also have a concert that night with an art display, so come on out, lots of things going on, and get out here and vote, it'll be very important, so. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add?
I'll add that we're interviewing tomorrow for our long-term subposition for Bill Slater for social study, we have an excellent team, teachers, admin, support staff, parents, students, so we'll, we'll do a first set of interviews with those tomorrow, we'll send three candidates to Mr. Fiscus, so I feel like we'll get a good candidate there that paper, there's some that are standing out. We have our schedule, the bulk of the heavy lifting for the schedule is completed, so it's starting to come together, and we have a summer camp that we're doing this year, it's new, that we have selected some staff, and we have some really great ideas about what we think that can be.
I was gonna say, almost all of that, except I'm not hiring. I'm really proud of the way our scheduling committee is working, our survey came in, and Connie and Michelle and I really took a backseat for the first time, our teachers really took the lead, and they dove in, and they're so proud of it, so we're almost ready to unveil it, we have one more meeting to fine tune and make sure that the special amendments are really gonna make sense with I E Ps, and then we're gonna share it with the O A T A, and we're excited about how that's working out.
I'm gonna jump off something Christine said about ramping up our P D again, you've heard us talk about structured literacy, we're making shifts in how we're teaching reading to both our elementary and our secondary students, and there's a cream of the crop training called letters training, it stands for language essentials for reading teachers, you have to be certified instructor to teach it, it costs a very large amount of money, but it's what all, everybody wants to be able to have, it's just quality instruction, and we were fortunate when Chris Assanti came to us, Batavia had started her on that journey, so she was already well-versed, because she did come from that elementary environment when she came to us, and then this past fall into spring, it's like each section is four full days, so it takes a little while to get through them, we sent our reading- our reading teachers at the elementary, they had a virtual offering, Monroe One BOSIs is who is actually offering the program right now, because GB does not have anybody certified to do it, nor do I believe Monroe Two does. So, after Corinne and Alana took this, they said, "Everybody needs to take this. They, we, our teachers need to take this." So, we were fortunate enough in planning for PD, knowing that we were gonna ramp it up. We have, what, special ed, kindergarten, first grade and second grade, or, for UPK, grade levels that are going to be able to attend this training in the spring. It is post-erel because it is offered through our BOSIs, and we're just really, really excited, and the teachers are excited, and we're just gonna keep spreading this stuff and get these kids a solid foundation.
Until Christine talks, we're not allowed to-
I told you, I'm sending you another cross contract, just sign it, please. No, but it is, it's aidable, just, just like with GB BOSIs, we get our aid back when we do it through Monroe One. We also can do that, we just have to do a cross contract, is what it's called, to make that happen.
And sometimes it's hard to find teachers that are really excited after going to a professional development, and when Alana and Corinne are done with their day, they just word vomit, and they can't talk about it enough. So, we're excited that we're able to share the wealth with some other teachers.
So, alright Connie, what does letters connect to that we've already done? What are we, how are we building off of something that we've already done?
So, letters is a, is not a program. It's training in the fundamentals to support whatever is happening in a school. So, for us, that will help solidify their foundational knowledge. In our early elementary, we have the Haggerty, we have, um, the foundations. But this even moved on to our upper elementary, too, to give those teachers those foundations, the things that like you and I didn't learn, to teach them.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
I learned a miracle.
Okay, I'll re-just, um, anyway, so it gives them that foundational-based knowledge of what reading is all about, and how it works in the brain, and what you can do to help support kids from the very basics all the way up to like your comprehension and-
So, this is past decoding and coding, there's just no comprehension, so, 'cause I feel like we've had-
It's making the cycle connect.
Yeah, so this is applicable to any student who doesn't have rock solid from decoding, 'cause it does start there, but all the way up through that comprehension piece.
And it's not just letter name, it goes through syllable juncture or hallway?
And this, this is super, they call it a deep dive. Um, volume one is for, I think, for seven-hour days, and that's just the very first volume, and there's lots of volumes of it, so it's very-
What do you get out of it physically? What physical resources can we use? 'Cause it's, it's gotta be more than theory, right? So, there's gotta be something that we can take into the classroom, or is it just all?
Well, it's practicing going, they, they do get guides, there's extra books that they get that they can refer back to, like, there's a letter spelling screener survey. When I say spelling, we're not just talking about memorizing, right? Um, we, actually, both buildings, they've been using the letter screener already, because Carissa brought it back from when she learned at Batavia, and Corinne and Alana learned it this past kind of fall into winter, so they've been using that. So, there's a lot of tools for each level. Corinne and Alana are moving on to the next set of higher-up ones. Um, the offering that we're saying we're really excited, we're able to provide some more of our teachers for this foundational.
So, can it be something that's incorporated with our GEOs that we're doing right now?
Okay, it's one hundred percent.
Something that's related with RTI, is it?
So, one hundred percent. One really nice example, um, third grade met with Connie about foundations and kind of never having taught it before, feeling like they're a crunch for time, and how are they gonna finish the program? So, Corinne and Alana worked with Connie, they went through and they were able to kind of piece meal to say, "These things can be consolidated, this is the focus that needs to happen before the next level can take place." So, just having that knowledge where they can look into a program and dive in and say, "Don't spend so much time here, spend more time here, this group of kids needs this level," and just kind of giving that expertise to kind of break down our resources in a totally different way.
It's like the PhD of reading, right? So, you've got that hot, that level way up here gives-
We'll have a presentation next year.
We should, next week.
It's not gonna do soon.
So then, and then we should see, we should see this reflected in I-ready assessments? We should see some progress, like bigger jumps, like-
Yeah, well, I mean, we hope so. That's always the hope, I, I might feel, and it wouldn't be our standard.
I'm never gonna put on my I-to-the-I-ready assessment, because some kids just do computer testing.
Sure.
So, in our ranching minds tier, you will see the, the gaps change, the way we did this year. We've seen some slight adjustments last tier three red. Um, you'll see that there, because we're using a lot of different screeners and data points instead of just the I-ready.
It's exciting stuff.
I'm gonna down my candles or something.
You wanna, you wanna take the online curriculum, please?
No.
Oh, Justin, you can do it. You want the fourth seat?
What's that?
You want the fourth seat?
We'll give you a seat.
A seat? The fourth seat?
A seat.
For the training?
Yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, I love it. I love it.
It is virtual. Six and a half, seven-hour days.
I, I have to pay for that stuff.
And we're essentially nudging Josh Kramer to get trained, so that we can have it in Givamp.
Yeah.
No, it sounds like, no, I, I, no, it sounds really cool, 'cause I don't know a lot, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with this at all.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's good, it's accredited by the International Dyslexia Association, it aligns to all the professional standards for teachers of reading. Like I said, it's, it's that Cadillac that we've just not had access to for ourselves or teachers or anyone before, and it's, it's within our grasp now.
Hopefully colleges start to teach this for their literacy masters.
Some states require every single elementary teacher to go through letters training.
So, I'm gonna shift gears and go from theory to making history come alive.
Oh, there we go.
We just came back from the DC Gettysburg trip. It was an outstanding trip, we had a ton of fun. We had spectacular weather in Gettysburg, um, learned a ton about the Civil War. Kids got to see how the cannons were fired, we didn't actually fire one, but they went through how you would load it, and what tools would be used, a lot of the theory to see where the, um, armies came across for the different charges. Um, and then when we went to DC, we didn't see the sun again, so my feet are still drying out. We saw no sunshine in DC, but I, we had a great group. So, everywhere we went, from the restaurants to the hotels, I got compliments from all the staff about how great our kids were. So, the weather wasn't the greatest, but we had a super fun trip, they learned a ton. We saw all the veterans of foreign wars memorials, we saw all the memorials for presidents, we just had a smashing great time, we had a ton of fun, and, uh, that, I hope they learned a lot. It was a great trip. And this was the group that was supposed to go in October of 2020. They finally got to go. So, it was good, and we're taking, we'll be caught up, we're gonna be in the second group in October of this school year, of next school year. Moving back on track. It was great to finally take them out and see that.
That's good. John, um, so I wanted to just follow up on that email from this morning on some of the spring score sizes, and just see what the options are, you know, available to us at the school. Um, parent volunteers, in terms of giving, you know, coaches additional help, are, are parent volunteers something that happened at other schools? How do we, how do other schools, so, so the, the baseball modified team, you know, it's, it's a Caesar and a bell of hearts, and, and parents are talking to us about the sizes of some of these, and, uh, we compare it to, you know, a lot of us are involved in these youth programs versus the twelve youth team that I coach, has ten girls on it, and three coaches, and all the girls have, have played softball before, and, you know, still showed up by three coaches. They're a modified team, um, fifteen girls with a great coach. Uh, some have not played before, not a lot of help or assistance. What are the options available to us, certainly?
So, so there's a couple. I, I talked to Jeff this morning about it, so, you know, we're seeing the large numbers at the modified levels. I think by the time you get, you get to JV and varsity, you know, a couple of years at the modified level, kids decide to not play or do something else. So, the JV and the varsity levels don't seem to be bad. It's, it's the modified level. So, for baseball, you know, we have twenty, twenty-two kids on there. We've always had that thought of, you know, do you cut kids, do you not? Is there a way to work around it? Um, we've always kind of been, like, you know, you don't wanna cut kids, they're still, they're still young, and so, for, like, even for basketball, do you have an A-B, A-team, a B-team? Do you have them, instead of playing fourteen games, do you split them up and have them play seven games each? Um, what we said about modified baseball was that we would have three groups of seven, basically, an A, B, and a C, which I had mentioned to the board, and the first game, A and B would play, and then the second game, B and C would play, and then C and A would play, so you only have fourteen kids there playing. Um, you know, per the, the email this morning, that they were all there that first game, um, I think it was just to, to get them all there, but I, I do understand it. So, there, there's two ways. We could have cuts. We could start next school year with, with cuts. Um, you know, and certainly I don't wanna have just, you know, one or two kids getting cut. You know, we talked about a, you know, I coach baseball, so you have about fifteen kids on a, on a JV varsity modified team, that, that's good, fifteen kids. Um, if twenty-two or twenty-three kids come out, you're gonna have seven or eight cuts. We could, we could certainly do that. Um, or, or you have twenty-two kids, and maybe you, you do have an extra stipend for an assistant coach. Um, that's really gonna be kind of what, what the, you know, the board and the community wants.
I think that's more my interest is the, the additional supervision that can be given to the program, not, not so much focused on the, the cuts. Um, of course, some creativity that we had there, but the fact of, of one supervisor, you know, coach, whatever we wanna call it, for, for twenty-two kids or even fifteen kids, um, safety concerns, um, in addition to just, you know, building a program, and transition of these programs from the youth levels of what we're building in our community as we transition and hand these programs over to the school, and making sure that we're doing that as seriously and responsibly as possible, so.
It's, it's a good problem to have, 'cause I think, you know, maybe back, way back when, when only fifteen or sixteen kids did go out, you didn't have cuts, so you just, you played, and maybe you told one or two kids, "Hey, look, you may see limited playing time, but, but you made the team." Now, we have an influx of kids coming for these, you know, I mean, the, the signups, I mean, you can only go by so much with the signups. You'll have, you'll have thirty kids shine up, sign up, and then the first day of tryouts, you'll have twenty-two kids show up, you know, people, they sign up and then, you know, they, they don't come out. But, I mean, it is a good problem to have. I think, moving forward into next fall and next school year, you know, I, I talked to Jeff, and I said, "I think the coaches need to see the signups and those first day of tryouts, and then just be very transparent with everybody, saying, 'Hey, look, I can't take twenty-six girls on the soccer team, I'm only gonna take, you know, sixteen or seventeen.'" There's, there's gonna be a handful of cuts. Um, you know, that, that could be the real reality.
I, I don't know, man, not to interrupt you, but like, I watch varsity basketball, right, and I look at the bench over there, and there's more than one coach over there. You've got Coach Krakowski, you've got Ryan, you've got, I don't know how many guys are over there. How do they get over there?
Well, they're, they're unpaid volunteers, 'cause you have, you have someone that's doing statistics, you have someone that's doing scouting. So, you know, at the varsity level, there's, you know, there's a lot more to it.
Sure.
Modified, I-
But they're over there, right?
It's probably coach's discretion to some degree, so-
Because we never approved anybody to be over there, and I can recall it.
So, potentially some of these other programs at the coach's discretion.
And they're not at all the practices, they aren't there at practices, you know, because, yeah, I mean, they have to be, they're-
Gary's in a lot.
So, we've got, we've got players, you know, for example, coaching first base, could that be something that a parent volunteer could do at the coach's discretion? I mean, we've got several more-than-capable parents in, in, in our community that, you know, with the Little League programs, yeah, yeah, as the kids get older.
It could be tricky, though.
Sure.
It can be a tricky thing.
But how do we get a player off of first base coaching and put an adult over there? That, that's my question. Can we have parent volunteers step into those roles to assist?
Um, yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that. Um, you know, if, if they're gonna be, you know, a volunteer coach, um, you know, I, you know, like, I, I know the one player that comes back, you know, they are approved, just because, you, you do need to be careful, because our coaches fall under a different, like, kind of like chaperones, you know, they fall under a different legality type of thing.
They're covered by the district, they're covered-
You know, you have, you have a parent volunteer that all of a sudden does something or says something on the bench or whatever, we don't have any recourse.
Right.
So, you have to be very careful with who's selected and, and who's there, compared to, you know, a coach that we approve, that we have as a, you know, as a stipend that's working for the district.
So, to Justin's point, sorry, yeah, to Justin's point, we're already doing that, right?
Yes.
In the basketball, varsity basketball team, so there's, there's a mechanism for approval of that or trust, and, and maybe some risk that the district is occurring already in April, sorry.
You know, so there would be opportunities, though, if somebody internally wanted to be an assistant or be their chef, and they could do so with these larger teams, versus a person from the outside, because I understand Christine's saying, liability-wise, they're not part of the district or employed by the district, so then they're at risk.
And we don't have a stipend position for a modified assistant softball coach or modified assistant, so we, you approve the extracurricular coaches based on what's in the contract. Not that we couldn't do an MOA if we have twenty-two, but are we gonna have twenty-two and two coaches, or you sit there and say, "We're gonna trim it down to fifteen and, you know, so?"
I can't remember, in all my years playing sports here, the school not having an assistant coach for any of the sports that I did soccer.
I would compare it, I don't see that going in other districts I see.
I probably didn't have none, I mean, yeah, there was a, you know, a-
Yeah, 'cause I know, I know Mike has, you know, Mr. Bryce, right, but, I know, I know, I know Mr. Anderson, I went in the gym today, 'cause modified was in the gym. There were a lot of kids around, and he was, he was the only one. There's balls flying everywhere.
And, and, and to that point, not just for the players, but also for that one person that's trying to do everything with twenty-two kids, that's, that's tough, that's tough, you know?
It's a tough job. Well, I just wanted to have a little discussion about that and see what the possibilities were, and, uh, and maybe, you know, there could be some cost analysis, to your point, and if you're saying, maybe it should be somebody within the building, what are we talking about appropriating for that? Um, but I would also say there's plenty of people sitting on those sidelines that have been involved for a long time, you know?
Well, you put it on the sidelines, and they put some of them, coach longer than our current coaches have, it's to know this credit of the coaches, but it's, it's, there's definitely some resources there that could be tapped in.
And I think it's tough, you know, seventh graders coming in, yeah, many of them have probably played T-ball, uh, maybe some, you know, haven't played, you know, house ball, and so seventh grade, you know, there's a lot of growing up to do, a lot of maturity, so modified, you know, you're not worried about winning, it's all about skill-building and, and just getting out there. Uh, by the time you get to the JV level, like I said, and if I play in seventh and eighth grade, and boy, I, I know that I'm not, I'm not good, I'm probably gonna do something else. So, like I said, our numbers do kinda dwindle when you get to JV and varsity. I just don't, I don't know, I guess I'm not in favor of either way of, you know, cutting kids or letting them play, but maybe they don't play as much, I, you know, that's, that's, that's a tough call.
We have cuts on the modified level. I, I, I know there was cuts when I was at school, basketball, at least, I don't know if we had cuts.
You know, right now, a lot of school districts, if we do have numbers, we'll just make an A and B team. We'll have one schedule and say, "Okay, this A-team is made up of seventh and eighth graders, you're going to play, you know, half the games, and the B-team plays." So, but at the same time, if we maybe made five or six cuts, we're dwindling that down to, you know, twelve or thirteen kids, and you're playing all the games.
I think it's a discussion that can go further, and we might wanna circle back to it. I mean, as it is, that, you know, the dice be cast, so to say, for this season, and we have a little bit of leeway between now and, you know, our next school year, but-
And I think we watched the fall numbers, I mean, you know, football is gonna be football, that's-
It's not, it's not impacted really in the fall, right?
No, and, and, you know, it's not, and, and, you know-
Or basketball.
Right, it's gonna be the winters, and, um, you know, that's gonna be just really the flavor of what our community wants, you know, if, if we turn around and say, "Hey, look, we got twenty-five kids showing up for modified basketball, what do you, what do you want us to do?"
Well, there's gonna be a couple of arguments there, right?
Sure.
And I don't think we'll go into it. There's, there's the argument, a parent whose kid is like fantastic, and has played on different travel teams, and is ready to go, and they wanna play, start, and get their minutes, right? And then there's the, the other side, is the kid that's really just looking to play and is, is excited to be a part of a team, and they want that experience, and, you know, I don't, I don't, I get both sides, right? Like, I get both sides, so we have to kinda round out that conversation and see what we can even make it fit, every part, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, it's great to have the amount of kids that are coming out, it's great to see our teams being very successful over the last few years.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Is that it, John?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, on to new business. Uh, be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point five be approved by Senate agenda. Can I get a motion?
So, vote on that.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
Shabazz.
Eight-six, we have a donation. Uh, be it resolved that the donation from DTO be accepted? Uh, it was a nice donation of five- It was a nice donation of five hundred dollars to be used to purchase courtyard toys for the elementary school. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike can say thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you very much for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Charlie, do we have any communications tonight?
No.
Okay. And discussion roundtable, I think. Can I just add? Can I get a motion to be it resolved that the Board of Education will run their executive session at seven thirty-one PM regarding the employment of certain employees? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all in favor? Please don't. All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education returns to regular session at seven forty-four PM. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to personnel. Be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point five be. Twelve, thank, thank you, you're a hawk, man. Twelve point two through twelve point five be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Twelve point six, I'll get it.
Sorry.
Well, it's okay.
We threw an executive session in there.
John's apologizing for me, I apologize.
Oh, well, then, I accept the apology and move forward. Okay. Twelve point six is a resignation. Be it resolved that the resignation of Jeffrey Higgins as an automotive mechanic, effective May sixth, two thousand twenty-two, will be accepted. Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank Jeff for being here.
Sixteen years.
And that service is, to be really appreciative, being with us for that long, the time period. So we wish you the best of luck in your endeavors, and that you have great experiences moving forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Are you ready back there, guys? You've really, you've endured. Okay, on to tenure recommendation. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, John Fiskus, be it resolved that Lori McGray be granted tenure effective September first, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Yep.
Any discussion? Thank you, Lori, for being with us. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. This is where the balloons come, Mrs. Pritchett, back there. I worked hard, I'm blowing these up. Upon the, it's gonna happen. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Fiskus, be it resolved that Jennifer Pritchett be granted tenure effective September first, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Thank you, Jen. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, upon the recommendation, this will be another tenure recommendation. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Fiskus, be it resolved that Ali Julker be granted tenure effective October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, I missed the discussion. This is rapid fire. Any discussion? She's back there. Such a large chat, Mr. Petersen, so. Petersen down.
Big target.
Are you hiding behind us?
Yes. Congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Okay. Tenure recommendation for Mr. Phelps. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Fiskus, be it resolved that Dylan Phelps be granted tenure effective September first, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion? Second? Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor? You can't clap yet, man. I'm sorry, this is a, opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, sir, and thank you so much. Okay, twelve point eleven. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, Mr. Fiskus, be it resolved that Bree Trembley be granted tenure effective September first, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, all right, one more here. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, John Fiskus, be it resolved that Lori Rudolph be granted tenure effective September first, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, wow, I think that might be a record for tenure. I, I, it's a lot. It's a really, it's impressive. It's a great number, actually. So it's time for our closing remarks. Dan, we'll start with you this time.
Okay. Congratulations again on receiving tenure. It's quite an accomplishment and thank you. And we got four or five weeks left and it's the long haul, so all the best to everybody. And let's get through the school year.
Thanks, Dan. Marianne?
So we're just coming off of Teacher Appreciation Week, which is very near and dear to my heart. So I just want to first and foremost say thank you to all of our incredible, amazing, talented teachers that we have here at O.A. And also congratulations to everyone on their journey tonight.
Thanks, Marianne. Mr. Lamb?
Yep, congratulations for signing the tenure, legible May 17. Everybody show up and vote, and I'd like to get more votes than Justin, so please vote.
Oh.
Milkshake?
Milkshake. Yeah, I would like a milkshake.
It's official.
So I'll just give you the order.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you. You got me last time. You got me last time. I still am upset about it.
Not as much recruiting this time.
Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Um, congratulations to all of you guys for tenure. Thank you again for Teacher Appreciation Week. Very, very appreciative for all you do. Happy Mother's Day to all the previous, yesterday's mothers of teachers, administrators, everybody who we know sharing the duty of being a mom and a professional and it's, it's a hard, it's a tough deal. So thank you to everybody for all your hard work and happy weather coming soon. Great sports, was actually squirting.
Thank you. Boy, it was nice tonight to have a whole meeting and only see COVID one time. It was in your budget.
Sorry.
Shame on you.
Shame on me.
But I do feel like we're definitely moving forward here. It is wonderful to have you guys be a part of this tonight. Some of you, it's not your first time you've been tenured and that's a, that's a cool thing. So it really, I think, speaks to your caliber and maybe your age, Jen. We will talk about that. I do appreciate what you do here. Teacher appreciation is great, but to just have it for one week, I, I just, I, it's an interesting thing, right? We get a letter from our board at Kendall and it's, it's, it's usually a very similar letter every year. Thank you for being a teacher. We appreciate you. And I, I don't, I don't know the significance behind that letter, but we really do appreciate what you're doing here. The fact that you're here to, to show up tonight and be able to, to hang out for this amount of time, that shows your commitment to the school district and it's, it's acknowledged. And all the other things that you do are acknowledged. So with that being said, I really do look forward to where we're heading. Listening to Officer Alejandro tonight talk about the next level. I think that's where we have to get, as we move forward, is constantly just kind of taking it to the next level. And the longer we're here together, the better that we can function in heading towards that next level. And I, I'm very happy. And so as much as many jokes around, I am really looking forward to possibly my wife and myself voting for me and then maybe getting in to serve a few more years here. So please do come out and vote. I think this board is really, works well together along with staff and administration and see great things in front of us. And accomplish some really great things in the last few years together. So thanks again and please have a great evening and a good rest of the week. Be it resolved that the regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned at 7:54. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.